You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in pleasurable allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being of us.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by some TV digital media. It'll be rebroadcast at ten AM Friday morning, again at four PM Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all public hearings today, each side will have a total of twelve minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one will be allowed to speak unless the planning board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested. Petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property. For special use zoning districts, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken here today will go to those boards for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today, before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business, approval of amendments of the December tenth and twenty-eighth meetings. Any additions or corrections?
No approval.
Motion, Mr. Mulligan, second, Mr. Lamb, in discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll now call on Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item is item B one, zoning docket W thirty-two seventy-nine. And this is a request to rezone about a little under three acres from RS nine to general business special use. You can see the site in yellow there at the corner of Bryan Cliff and Renolda. The applicant did request this be withdrawn. They met the guidelines, the planning board's guidelines for automatic withdrawal. So this item's been withdrawn, no vote is needed. Next item is B four, zoning docket W thirty-two eighty-five. And this is a request to rezone one point one-one acres from institutional and public zoning to limited office zoning. And you can see the subject property highlighted in yellow there. It's surrounded by Cleveland Avenue, East Tenth Street, and Mount Zion Place. It contains an existing daycare center. You may remember this did come to the planning board roughly a year ago for a request for LOs zoning, and the use requested at that time was shelter for the homeless. That case was ultimately withdrawn by, at the city council level. And subsequent to that case, UDO two sixty-three removed the use of shelter for the homeless from the LO zoning district. I just want to let everybody remember that. Staff has reviewed this. We feel the LO is an appropriate district to this location, and we would recommend approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said and known, we'll close the public hearing.
No.
Second, motion, Mr. Lamb, second, by Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B five, it's zoning docket W thirty-two eighty-six. And this is a request to rezone to thirty-six hundredths of an acre from pedestrian business special use zoning back to pedestrian business general use zoning. And you can see the subject property highlighted in yellow. It's at the corner of North Liberty Street and Bethlehem Lane. Just to the west of you have a church zone, general business, some existing general use PB zoning to the south, some RSQ zoning a little further to the east. And then you have the city's Fairview Park to the north. It's also zoned RSQ. I want to call your attention to something that I believe is in your agenda book. I believe there was a site plan included for this case. And I believe that site plan showed some improvements on the city's parkland to the north, and also showed a proposed parking lot on this subject property that you see before you take day. Obviously, the city does have a long-term lease on this. Obviously, there's been some thought given into this. But what I want to call your attention to is, this is a general use case. So you can't take into account what was shown on that site plan. You have to basically evaluate this case on the full range of uses allowed in the PB district and not take into account what's shown on that site plan. Staff has reviewed this, and we do feel comfortable with PB general use zoning at this location, given the surrounding zoning patterns area, and we would recommend approval of this request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said and known, we'll declare the public hearing closed.
No approval.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, by Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion?
Yeah. I did have a concern, or really a question about why the neighborhood meeting is being held after the planning board meeting. We've had this happen before. And it just, to me, I think it's a bad precedent to be setting. I think that it's important for us, when we vote on these matters, to have the input that might come out of a neighborhood meeting. So it really doesn't affect my vote in this case, but I just wanted to raise that issue. I think it's a concern.
And we always encourage the applicant to have a meeting before then. I think in this case, it was a scheduling problem that they had with the holidays and the people that were needed to get scheduled for the meeting and all that. So I think this was kind of a, hopefully, a unique circumstance there.
Any other comments? We have a motion for approval, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B six, zoning docket W thirty-two eighty-seven. And this is a site plan amendment request for some mixed use zoning property. It's about three point one-five acres, and you can see it there at the intersection of Meadowlark Drive and Beecham Road. It's basically the southern tip of the Brookberry Farm development. And you can see there the existing zoning pattern in the area. There's a little bit of neighborhood office zoning there to the west, and the recently constructed Sheets and Walmart grocery store development zone HBS a little bit further to the south, southeast. This is a site plan that's been submitted with this request, and it shows an eighty-five hundred square foot bank with drive-through lanes. And you see it's oriented towards Meadowlark Drive there. So this has come in for a site plan amendment essentially for three reasons. One is it's proposing, and, I'm sorry, let me go back. It's proposing an access point out on the Meadowlark Drive, and that was not shown on the original approved plan. So the staff does not have the ability to add that access point, so they have to come back through the process to add that. The second two items were conditions of the original rezoning approval. One stated there'd be no parking between the front building wall and the street. As you can see, there's a double-edged bay of parking there between the building and Meadowlark. And the other was that buildings should be pulled up within ten feet of existing right away. And obviously, this does not meet that. So essentially, those are the three items for which a site plan amendment is needed. I will call your attention to one other item of note. Beecham Road is proposed to be realigned in this area. It currently comes out, if you can see the mouse, in a very awkward angle there at the southern tip of this site. As part of this project, Beecham Road would be cul-de-sac, and then two new public roads, Redtail Lane and Rosewind Lane, would be constructed to get motorists out of there at a much safer location onto Meadowlark Drive. So that is also a component of this request. Staff has reviewed this, and we would recommend approval of this site plan amendment.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said and known, declare the public hearing closed.
No approval.
Second, motion by Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion?
Yes. There are a couple of things about this. I mean, I understand that this was originally, there were going to be some mixed use in here and whatnot. And I really liked the conditions that Brookberry, or whoever it was, put on, agreed to on this, because they seemed real sensible in terms of development for this area. And so a couple of things from it, I mean, it doesn't, you know, going out and visiting the site. I see, I don't see anything in the site that would keep an entrance from being off of that new road there and some other design modifications that would seem to be very relevant. But the first thing that caught my eye was the Legacy 2030 recommendations. And the first one was to promote design standards that enhance community appearance and maintain a unique sense of place. And I don't see this as really doing anything unique. It just seems to be a fairly cookie cutter type situation with a parking lot around it and a business in the middle. The other was to design and preserve natural features of the site, such as topography and views when developing the land. Not really. I'm not seeing it. I'd like to be convinced of that. The other was apply traditional walkable neighborhood design principles. This really seems to be designed more for automobile traffic, and it isn't picking up on that original vision, which I really like with Brookberry, of being able to walk into a place, which would, again, be what you had of the building being right on there with a sidewalk there, and the parking being behind, or some kind of configuration like that. And again, the fourth part of that legacy was to encourage attractive parking design and more efficient use of parking. Maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see anything here that's particularly addressing that. So I was just wondering if the people making the application had considered bringing the entrance in on the new road. What's the name of it? Redtail, is that the new?
Rosewind is the new, is the longer.
A Rosewood lane. And putting the parking further up the hill on that elevation and bringing the building down where it can really be seen by the public. I know we've got major problems on Meadowlark. I know that Meadowlark is going to be expanded. But any time we have more cuts on that Meadowlark, I just have to feel for the folks using the school and the additional residents that Brookberry's building along the way, that it's going to really up the number of visits on that road.
And I probably should have pointed out, it is a right-in, right-out. It's not a full access point.
Oh, it is. Right?
Right-in, right-out.
Right-in, right-out.
I should have mentioned that.
And you will notice, going back in, I don't think you put it up there, but in your packet there is the Brookberry Farm Master Plan, the original one.
Exactly.
And it does show that the buildings that were on that conceptual plan had more, had, I guess, a shorter distance between them and the main road coming into Brookberry. They really, the spacing between the buildings and Meadowlark was greater, and it sort of is that way there, although obviously, the parking is configured differently. Keep in mind, that was a conceptual plan. This larger area here was intended to be mixed use. It didn't necessarily mean that each parcel would be mixed use.
Any other comments? You have a comment, Mr. Lamb?
Well, I think Mr. Bryan stated some of my concerns. I really had a question about what the necessity was to depart from the plan, because, as Mr. Bryan said, it looks like you could do this without departing from the plan. And I like the plan. I like the fact that you don't have direct access onto Meadowlark here. And I am concerned about just like a proliferation of commercial along Meadowlark, given all the traffic issues.
I think if you're wanting to get into this and have a dialogue with the applicant, what you may want to do is not approach this as a consent item, but maybe put this behind the other public hearing items and let the applicant have some time to talk about it. I'd love to hear that.
Well, I mean, we have a motion to approve it. I mean, we've got some comments. I mean, we can answer the questions now, can't we? Or do we need to, or do you think we need to have a full blown?
Well, I'm not saying you need to do, but if you're going to, if your questions are being asked, that it sounds like you need the applicant to talk about there.
Well, I mean, let the applicant go ahead and address the questions now, then?
Sure.
Good afternoon. My name is Luke Dickey with Stimel Associates, representing the applicant today. Address is six zero one North Trade Street, Suite two hundred, here with cell two seven one oh one. In regards to the questions of the design, while we worked with the planning staff in this as well, we did have parking that would have been surrounding the entire building, but we worked with them specifically to try to minimize that parking and how it affects the site plan, and be able to pull the building up a little bit closer to the corner. So we did have parking at one time along Rosewind Lane as well, and we tried to address those concerns. The main thing is that the way the State Employees Credit Union here goes is that the employee entrance is typically in the back, and they like to separate the customers coming in at the front door, the bale dep. Not only that, for security reasons, but that's just the general model of how they like the circulation for the happen around the building. So they wanted the front entrance, of course, to face Meadowlark, which is your main view coming to the building, and then providing the parking there for the customers and then employees in the back. Overall, like we talked about, was there's a right-in, right-out onto Meadowlark. That helps out with the circulation from standpoint of the drive for coming through the drive-through. So if somebody's coming from northbound on the way someplace from Brookberry Farms, they can come in at Rosewind Lane, and then they can exit back out onto Meadowlark and continue their travel on the way south. Of course, if they need to head back north, then we got the provision then that they can circulate the building through the parking lot back up to Rosewind Lane, and then make a left at that point onto Meadowlark. In general, we tried to maintain the street trees, sidewalks are on all street fringes for Meadowlark and Rosewind. We made sure that we had the planting strip, so we have street trees between the curb and the sidewalks with lateral sidewalk connections for connectivity. So if the majority of the residents that would access this from the Brookberry development, they would have direct connections basically into the site off the sidewalks where they're not crossing any parking or anything like that. So their access would be off of Rosewind Lane. And so that was the general concept there. There is quite a bit of topography that does happen on this site. The building's basically set mostly on top of where the ridge is. So the open triangular space down on the south side of the, right down this area, we tried to maintain the grade we best we could. There, it slopes upwards, and then we got plantings on the top of that, and then it slopes back down towards the drive-throughs, so the plantings on top of the node to help screen the drive-through lanes. And then also on the backside over here, where Redtail Lane, as my cursor despair it is, this is also slopes generally up and then back down. So this is also kind of in a natural berm to kind of tuck it into the hillside. So that was the general design ideas behind this, and we have to answer any other questions that you may have.
Does Rosewind Lane, will it actually tie into this development?
Yes.
It's going to go on around and tie into the?
That's correct. Rosewind Lane is on the north side of Brookberry. Right now, this is proposed to go all the way up and tie into that.
So they will be able to walk to it? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, my understanding was this side was to be walkable and everything like that.
Yeah. So it'll be tied into the development? And, I mean, I'm quoting, I'm not, if I'm saying something wrong, please tell me. It will be tied into development so the people could walk to the bank?
And it could be.
On the golf cart, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that I just can't see the detail in your design so much. But you're saying that you can get from the sidewalk into the building? I mean, I don't see any natural paths there. It looks like you're passing over driveways and things like that to get into the building, rather than the building being on street front and providing some vitality there.
Yeah, the sidewalks, of course, are on the street side here. And then if you come on down Rosewind Lane, we've got a lateral connection that crosses basically the drive-through lane that helps you get back up and around so you can get back out on Rosewind.
Is there an entrance on that side toward Rose?
There is not an entrance. The main entrance is, of course, is at the front. There it is, at the front of the building here. So we have sidewalk connection, then along the front, and then it comes around the front of the building, and then you can access the building here. Which is generally the same route you'd take if you came down. If you pushed the building to the front, you would walk down and then to the front of the building.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't enjoy walking across drive-through lanes, whether it's at a Hardee's or a bank.
Any other questions of Mr. Dickey?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion for approval, all in favor? Opposed? Two opposed. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Last item, C one, PBR two thousand sixteen oh one. This is a request for a child daycare center in highway business zoning. You can see the subject property in yellow there on your map. It's located at the intersection of Wydona and Renolda Road there. It's a small half-acre parcel. And this is a site plan that's been submitted with this request to make reuse of that existing building there. To the right of the building, you can see the parking area. And to the south and to the west would be the fenced-in play area. Staff has reviewed this, and it does meet UDO requirements, and we would recommend approval of this PBR.
Please approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, for Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The first case is going to be presented by Amy Crum, who was the planner assigned to this case, and it is W thirty-two eighty-one.
Good afternoon. W two thirty, W thirty-two eighty-one is a resounding request by the city of Winston-Salem by request of Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee of the city council to rezone the Holly Avenue neighborhood from LO, PB, and PBS to RSQ. As you can see here, the property, the neighborhood is located just on the edge of downtown, on the west side of downtown, centrally within Winston-Salem. The neighborhood is located, is shown in yellow. It's bounded to the north by Second Street, to the south by First Street, to the east by Poplar, and to the west by Spring Street. Most of the properties are zoned LO. There are some PB and PBS properties as well. And the surrounding properties are mostly PB, PBS, PBL, LO, and IP. This is the aerial photo of the neighborhood. The area in question is outlined in yellow. As you can see, most of it is developed. There are five vacant properties within the neighborhood. This is a kind of close-up view of the growth management area map, showing areas one and two. You can see through the arrow where the Holly Avenue neighborhood is located. It's actually been sort of pulled out of GMA one, which is downtown town centers, and actually added to GMA two, which is urban neighborhoods. And those are characterized by being developed prior to nineteen fifty. The area is located within the Holly Avenue Neighborhood National Register Historic District. And this historic district is characterized by architectural integrity as a residential neighborhood. This map here shows the current land use for the area. Most of the area is single-family residential and low-density residential, but there are some multifamily and office uses within the area. These uses would be considered legal non-conforming if the resounding request is approved. And under a legal non-conforming use status, the operation would be allowed to maintain and remain unless the property was to go to vacant for more than a year. The owner would be allowed to do a one-time expansion of up to twenty-five percent of the gross floor area, and they would also be able to rebuild the property if, for some reason, it's destroyed by an act of God. And there are some provisions to that, that they would be able to rebuild as well. This is the proposed land use map, as shown in the downtown area plan adopted in two thousand thirteen. As you can see, the golden area is pretty much the Holly Avenue neighborhood. And that is for general residential. There is some mixed-use zoning proposed for the area along the west side of Spring Street, and that's the magenta color that you see that basically makes up all of downtown. Here's some photos of the area. This is First Street looking west, Second Street looking west, Poplar Street looking south, Shady Boulevard looking north, Spring Street looking south. And here are some photos of some representative residential properties that would be allowed within the, within the current, if the current zoning, the proposed zoning is approved. And they consist of single-family duplexes, quadruplexes, and triplexes. And here are some photos of the office and multifamily uses that are in the area. One thing to note is that the offices are not your traditional office building. They are home conversions, so they still maintain that sort of residential character. Adjacent properties to the north and south include offices, again, home conversions, maintaining that character, multifamily residential, and then some commercial property. And adjacent properties to the east and west include a mix of residential properties, a church, and then an office building. Staff analysis of the proposal, the area was historically a residential area. The majority of properties within the area are currently residential structures that would be allowed under RSQ zoning. However, there would be some non-conforming properties created by the rezoning. The request will discourage incompatible business uses from being established in the predominantly residential area. And the request conforms to the recommendations in the Legacy twenty-thirty update, the Downtown Plan Update, the two thousand nine Urban Land Institute Study, and then nineteen ninety-two Holly Avenue Neighborhood Design Study. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time?
What happens to the non-conforming property?
As long as it?
Is that like grandfathered in?
Yeah, as long as it doesn't go vacant. As long as they continue, it doesn't go vacant for more than a year, they can continue using the property as an office or multifamily structure. If that year of vacancy passes, then they would, they would have to confirm with the current, the new zoning, or somehow request a rezoning back, or something like that.
Okay, what happens if it, say, burns down?
They would be able to rebuild, but they would have to build underneath their, basically, their floor plant, the footprint that they have. Yeah, but they would have to have the building permit within a year of it burning, and then have to get their CO within two years of the building permit being issued.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I just wanted to.
Thank you. All right, sign of proponent, Mr. McIntosh?
I'm Jeff McIntosh, one twenty-nine Woodborough Road, two seven one oh six. My relationship to the neighborhood of Holly Avenue goes back to nineteen eighty-three, when my wife and I bought our first house in the neighborhood. Since then, I was a founder of the Neighborhood Association, served as association president for nine years, and then my wife Susan served for nine years. She was instrumental in getting the National Register District status for the neighborhood. In the entire time that I've been there, well, for the majority of it, sort of the conventional wisdom was that this area would convert to office just because of its proximity to downtown, that investors would come in and convert residential properties to office. In that period of time since nineteen eighty-three, there are only four properties that converted from residential to office. And one of those converted back from office to residential. So the market has had thirty-some years to look at these properties and convert them to office. Instead, what has happened is that people have chosen to live downtown, and that trend we're seeing on many levels. But the area now is a preferred place to come live in a single-family home. There are multiple instances of houses selling for above three hundred thousand dollars. But it's also a very good diverse mix, sort of all demographic levels. It is really an ideal downtown residential neighborhood. And the, this zoning will allow people to come in and invest in residential property without the, without the fear of the property extorted to them converting to office. We do have some conflict with pedestrian traffic and with parking problems from offices. So this is really just a way to recognize what has occurred in the market over the last thirty years. And the market has said this is, this is really, this is a residential neighborhood. So that's what this is in effort to solidify. Questions?
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Okay, then we'll turn to the opposition. David Archer?
Hi, I'm David Archer. I live at one thousand eight South Hawthorne Road here in Winston-Salem. We own some of the property there on Spring Street at the corner of Second and Spring Street, one thirty-four and one forty-four Spring Street. And the other owner on Spring Street, Terrace Banks, who owns one sixteen North Spring Street. And we, the block that we're in is sort of split between commercial. We have the car sales lot, and then a house that's, that I guess has got zoning commercial that fronts on Broad Street, and then the dash, the Brookstown. that the Brookstown Development Partners has, has a lot there, and they're leaving that piece out also, as I understand, as part of this zoning, changing, and we would like to be left out of it also, we'd like to leave our zoning the same, because we're, we're all in that same block, and we're all part of that same piece, so we would like it to stop at Spring Street rather than picking and choosing some of the properties on, on Spring Street to include and not include in this rezoning.
Your property contiguous to the property that's left out, you're saying, or-
Yes.
I can't really tell from this map. Can some of us, whoever be having this- Quick partial, we're-
You can point to the-
Okay, ours, this, this is right here, right?
Yeah.
Ours is right here, right here, and here. This is the property that is not being left out, this is being left out, that's being left out, this is the Dash, this is being left out, it's all the way to Spring, and this is the, Terrence is right here, this house has been torn down by the church, that was sold to the, given to church by them, and those are, so basically, all of these that they're there on this side of Spring Street is what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we'd like it to stop here at Spring Street.
Okay.
I guess the Dash has made it, has talked to them to try to get theirs left out of it, and they've left it out all the way to Spring, and we'd like ours left out also. We need it, we need it as, I guess we're PBS right now. Limited all this.
No.
Oh, we're, we're LO, okay, so we're still LO. And a lot of the houses right here, on this side of Spring have been turned into offices. We're not sure exactly what our long-term plan is as far as what we want to do with it, but that seems to be what has happened on that side of Spring Street, right in there, and so we don't want that, that, the value of that to go away and to limit it to residential, when everything else around us is already commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terrence Banks?
Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, yes, I'm Terrence Banks, and like Mr. Archer said, I live here at 116 Spring, right there, and I just agree with everything he said, we would like to keep this side of Spring Street the same as limited office, we don't mind, you know, just having, just editing us out and leaving the rest to change or whatever they want to do, but we would just like to keep our property the same, so I, I basically just agree with everything that he said.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Now, wait a minute. I don't understand, does your property run out all the way up to that Dash?
Yes, sir.
Eighty-one foot, so you own from the Dash all the way down to the-
I own this property right here where the pencil tip is.
Yes, sir.
And this is my garage in the back of my house, this is what the Dash owns in this driveway, so I'm right next door to this property, and they're about to demolish this property.
Okay, that's right.
And actually, I've been living in this property since 2005, and I actually have anticipated the Brookstown Development Partners coming and purchasing that property from me, I've seen documentation that they're interested in the property, and I would just like to keep it the same and not have it limited to just single-family.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? The Federal Party here enclosed?
Well, I would think since the, the Dash has already got that eighty-one foot in there or whatever, if we cut that back out, then we could cut Mr. Archer's property out without any problem.
Everything to the west of Spring.
Yeah. Everything to the west of Spring, is that four parcels or-
Well, whatever it is, starting right there at the Dash going north. I mean, it looks like four.
Okay, four, four. And all of them owned by Mr. Archer and Mr. Banks, right?
Right next door to me is owned by Mr. Archer, but he donated it to a church, donated it to a church, and they're, it's been condemned by the city, so they're about to demolish.
Yeah, they're gonna tear that one down.
And there's one blank lot. Yeah, right next to me, where the Dash driveway comes out where it says 101, that's a, just a blank lot there at 101, right there, it's just a blank lot. Something in the house or some property could be built.
Who owns that lot?
Supposedly the people where the, on the Broad Street side, right, right behind it, on the Broad Street side, they own both of those charities, but somehow they-
Yes, that, that property was owned by an individual, and the, he got a loan from the bank, and they didn't include that piece of property as part of it, and they foreclosed on it. That's the house that's for sale on Broad Street, the one that fronts on Broad Street, but that lot was not included when the bank foreclosed on it, so it's still owned by the previous owner. So there's, there's a guy who owns it, but it, it actually is not buildable, that lot is actually not buildable, I took a look at it, it's not actually buildable.
Oh, is it like a big gully or something?
It's just too small.
Oh, okay.
Basically, it's like a backyard. The gentleman, the gentleman owned this property, which is based on Broad Street here, he owned this property and the lot behind, but they lost this property, so they still own it.
Right, sir.
I'd like to know, excuse me, I'd like to know how the petitioner or Mr. McIntosh feels about that proposal, or counter-proposal.
I'm gonna go back to the fact that these properties have been available for use as office for, at least since the early eighties, when LO zoning came in, and prior to that, it was kind of fair game, you could kind of do anything you wanted down there. RSQ does not limit you to single-family residential, it limits you to quad, so you can develop this as quadruplex, which means you can get a fairly high-density usage out of those single, those particular plots. The market right now is saying that downtown residential is your highest and best use, and this section of Spring Street, I think, will be difficult to develop as office property because they're very small lots. People have had an opportunity to come in and do small-scale office, and it just hasn't occurred, so we've kind of flipped, and we've kind of made the move towards, towards residential being more valuable than office. So I don't view this as a, as an impediment to achieving highest and best use on these pieces of property. The Dash may be interested in this piece of dirt, but the Dash has got a lot to chew on right now, I think this is probably, I think they're probably a long way from making any other acquisitions, it's not core to what they're doing. That little strip of land there that goes from Broad back to Spring Street is a driveway, so it doesn't really, it doesn't change the aspect of that street. When you drive from Brookstown to Second Street, it feels like a residential street. That is not a big gap, that particular driveway is not a big gap, and I don't know that you couldn't build a lot one-on-one, we're getting ready to go into a discussion about auxiliary dwelling units and tiny houses and things like that. This is a neighborhood where that would fit in perfectly, so I don't think it's undevelopable, but it is, it, it will be tough to acquire that for some time, I believe, just because of the status of the ownership of it. So I, I don't believe that it makes sense to cut this out as, as, from residential, leaving it as, as office space, I just don't think the market's gonna respond to it, and I don't think the ownership will be hurt by, by keeping it as residential.
My comment to that would be, though, we're trying to rezon these folks' property, and they don't want to rezon. And what, I mean, if that west side of Spring Street were left out, does that negatively impact what we're trying to do with the rest of it?
I think it does, because one of the, one of the aspects of Holly Avenue that makes it so attractive, the neighborhood, is that it's, it's a fairly dense, fairly contiguous, fairly homogeneous residential feel to it, so as you drive through there, it feels like a residential street. If the, if the west side of, of Spring turns into full-blown office, it's not gonna feel like a residential street anymore.
But you say it's not going to anyway, so what difference does it make? I mean, I'm not-
Well, this is for- Most of our rezonings add uses, or add the ability to do something. This is a rezoning request that is taking away-
Right.
You know, taking away property rights, and that, you know, that's, that's sort of not what we generally do, and if the market says that quads or duplexes or single-family is, is the way to go, then these gentlemen are gonna develop as single-family residences, they're gonna do whatever the market tells them to do, I'm sure, so that, that's why I, I am really hesitant to take away property rights.
That's actually what I was thinking as well, most of the cases that we see are people concerned about what's happening next door or down the street. Very seldom do we have cases where there's a zoning request that's gonna impact their own property in a, in a way that they don't want it, so I'm, I'm very concerned about that as well.
Well, and if you look at the lines, I mean, the lines that we drew to include in the zone are, I won't call them jagged, but we were very careful to try to include, only include people that we thought would not be impacted, and, and we held, and we walked the neighborhood, we've had multiple neighborhood meetings, we've had a public meeting, this is the first time that I've heard opposition from this, so, I mean, I understand where they're coming from. I don't want, I don't want to kill the, the good for the perfect here, I think that if we can, if we can, if we can keep the core part of the neighborhood as residential, and that's, that's what this was, the whole thing was designed to do, was to protect the residential core and the investments that people have made, looking at folks from Holly Avenue, I don't, I don't think we want to see the whole thing go down in flames based on that.
If, if I could mention also just point of information, that PBS that you see that goes in a narrow neck to Spring Street, that was not excluded from the, at, at the Dash's request, that was, that was left out of the original drawing of it because it is zoned PBS and it's kind of unified zoning, so it wouldn't have made sense to chop, chop off a PBS and, and do that, so that's the reason why that was, that was left out.
Just in case you're questioning what that RSQ hole, that donut hole is in the middle of that, that's a piece of property that was zoned RSQ prior to the rest of it being zoned LO. That actually is a single-family house on that lot that my wife and I moved from Second Street a half a block over to that site and restored.
Okay.
I just want to make one comment, that, one way that I look at this is similar to when, when you're doing a neighborhood conservation overlay, it's a type of zoning, rezoning of land where not everyone is gonna be in agreement with it, but you try to set your boundaries in a way that captures the reason for doing the rezoning, and, and that protects the area that you want to protect, and that also best reflects the, you know, what people want, and you're not always gonna have everyone in agreement, but in this case we do have a, a block that's contiguous where everyone seems to be of the same view, so I, I can see both sides of the argument.
Yeah, I'd, if I could just comment, particularly to the neighbors that are, that are doing this, I was living and involved in the back zoning in the, in the West End when it went to RSQ, and just to remind you, as we look at this, that this isn't the end-all bomb that, that makes your neighborhood protected, you still have to fight those zoning cases on the edge, you need to decide as a neighborhood where your line is, because there will continue to be edge properties and others that will come in to want to change their zoning for various reasons, and similar to what we're hearing right now, and you have to be vigilant on that, you have to be, to keep your councilperson up to date on those kinds of issues if you want to maintain that core of your neighborhood and, and keep that long-term. We've been through many, many such cases in, in the West End over the years.
Well, you know, I understand what, I understand what you're saying, you know, about, Lynn, about the, the plans, the plans that we do and the overall of whatever, and that's not really a rezoning, it's just what they want to see go in that place, whatever. This is a rezoning case, and I don't think that any shot, anyone should be forced to rezon their property, evidently they, you know, the other people are in a grits, there's nobody here but Mr. Archer that wants to keep it the same. The other reason that I'm, I'm, you know, is looking at this, it's on, it's on the outside, and, you know, if it's in the middle, I'd still have a problem with, with, you know, voting to change somebody's property when they don't want to do it. I mean, we do have property rights, and so, you know, my thinking is, we cut it off and run it, like I said, right up Spring Street there and leave Mr. Archer out, and everybody goes home happy.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
And Mr. McIntosh?
A motion to take everything west of Spring Street out.
Right.
And you, and you recommend approval.
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
The motion, Mr. Morgan, second, Mr. Younger. Discussion.
Okay, the notice that, the notice I'm sure went out to every property.
Yes.
Okay, and it's a letter that just states that there's a rezoning, I didn't, was the letter in the, the letter wouldn't have been a part of our agenda?
No, we, we don't do that.
I just wonder how many folks got the letter and, you know, it was very clear.
Everybody, everybody got the letter, plus everybody in that hatched-in area around there got, got a letter. I don't know whether they read it or not, but they were, they were sent a letter from, from this office.
And I believe there's several folks here that live in that area, that are in agreement with the S. I.
Okay, all right, very good.
Yeah, and if I could just clarify on the motion, that, that, of course, Planning Board doesn't have the authority to unilaterally change what the zoning is, but what your, what your vote is, is a recommendation to the City Council.
That always is. Yeah, I mean, they knew, yeah.
They're gonna have the final say, we know that.
And, and the motion would exclude everything to the west of Spring, which is, are a couple properties that are not represented by ownership, but includes Mr. Archer and Mr. Banks and a couple other properties, but it just, just creates a different line. Okay, so that's, that's the motion, is there a discussion on that? Then I'll call the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Brian's opposed, okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item on your agenda is zoning docket W. 3284. The property is currently zoned HB, excuse me, let me back, back this image up here. All right, apologize about that, case W. 3284, and the petitioner is Mercy Rama Incorporated, and the site is 3.76 acres, located on the east side of Chestnut Street and the west side of Patterson Avenue, south of Glen Avenue, and the request is a special use limited request, rezoning from HBL Highway Business Special Use Limited to HBL Highway Business Special Use Limited. This is Legacy's growth management plan, it's located within the pink urban neighborhoods along the Patterson Avenue growth management area, and this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in the center in yellow, currently has a building located on the, on the subject property that fronts along Patterson Avenue, it's about 15,800 square feet in size, the western portion of the site is undeveloped and wooded, that fronts along Chestnut Street. You may remember this site was rezoned in 2014 from limited business and limited industrial to highway business special use limited, so this case is before you today to, to do two things, one, to change some of the uses, the petitioner wants to drop some of the uses that are already approved, add some additional highway business uses, and also there was a condition previously approved for access onto Chestnut Street that prohibited access onto Chestnut Street, and actually has a 50-foot undisturbed buffer along Chestnut Street, and the petitioner is desiring to have a potential for an access on the Chestnut Street, so that's the other reason why this case is before you. You have some industrial area over to the, to the east across Patterson. Aerial photographs showing the subject property. It's located within the recently adopted North Central Area Plan Update, and it is within the Patterson-Glen Activity Center, shown there in red, it's recommended for commercial use, which is consistent with the request. This is the building here, built in approximately 1940, it's a former Seven-Up Bottling Company building, and more recently it was used as a funeral home. The petitioner has also applied for some matching RUKA funds, revitalizing urban commercial area funds- area funds that the city council did approve for the site in December. This is directly to the right of the, the subject property. This is not included in the request. They're again fronting on Patterson. And this is at the back of the site there on Chestnut Street. There is a considerable grade change to the back of the property, so it would probably be pretty, pretty extensive connection to make a connection or extensive earthwork, excuse me, to make a connection to Chestnut. But that, that is one of the conditions, and staff is, is okay with allowing that, a one single 20-foot driveway connection on the Chestnut. Again, the site is currently zoned highway business special use, and the request may facilitate the redevelopment and/or reuse of the site. The condition, the request includes a condition to preserve a 50-foot undisturbed buffer with the exception of the driveway along the frontage of Chestnut, as I mentioned earlier, and staff's recommendation is for approval. You received in your packet the list of uses there on page four, which the petitioner is willing to add from the current list of commercial uses, arts and craft studio, restaurant without drive-through, car wash, child daycare center, adult daycare center, some other uses, offices, institutional training, vocational training facility. Also, the, the uses that the petitioner is willing to remove are building material supply, motorcycle dealer, building contractor general, and outdoor display retail, which is car sales. So, those are the uses that the petitioner is, is willing to drop. But again, planning staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. No one signed up. Does the petitioner like to speak? Please give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Is that Amir? Good evening. We have the...
I need your address also, sir, please.
It's 1800 Patterson Avenue.
Thank you.
Winston-Salem, North Korea 27105. We did purchase lots of my family by the building last years, and we own a few property here in the towns, and we done a rezoning last year, and we've been here before, but we missing few items like a community center and the barber shop offices, whatever. So, we done the rezoning again, and the reason we ask for the community center, this is some free coming from our family, go back to the community. There's no profits or no money being made for our family. We will fix almost 3,500 square foot place, and we'll give it back to the community free to get the children out of the street, and we'll do something for the community. And that's what, that's what we here for.
Thank you, sir.
Could I just, could I just, yes, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Amir, you know, on paper, I wasn't confused about this at all, but on visiting the site, it did confuse me because I guess the majority of what I saw on site was auto-repair or some kind of auto-work. And, and I was trying to figure out, okay, how do we combine changing oil, tuning engines, doing things like that with childcare, adult care, and stuff like that? So, I'm just a bit confused about the property. Is there a whole lot that is separate from that auto repair piece?
Yes, we do have, when we done the plans, we have a five different separate places. And, you know, is that, is that divided by the highway, is not attached to it, and that place used to be a seven-up and the funeral home, and there's a have a garage area there. That's why we have the garage. We try get it back as a garage, which is called tire and the battery, you know, is not heavy garage, you know. Then we have a convenience store, then we have a, a three offices, then a warehouse in the back, then the community center, you know, go back to the community. So, we divided, we, when we do the drawing, we divided by the highway, making sure is no place attached to the others. And that's what the plans is. We already done it, we have the approval for it from the city inspection.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in support of this? So, then, now turn to the opposition. Dan Beam?
Hi, I'm Dan Beam, 1610 North Patterson, 27105. I have no objection to improving that area and redeveloping it. That's not at all why I'm here. My concern is the laundry list of about 50 permissible uses, everything from a stadium to a church to a car wash. I think the only thing left out is an airport or a marina. I would like to see a concrete plan of something specific. All we're being told is this kind of general, we might put in a this, we might put in a that, and I'd like to see something specific. This is a very sensitive area. The area's got a lot of issues with drugs, prostitution, and a huge issue with traffic. We have horrible problems with the milk processing trucks and the other stuff related to the dairy right across the street from there on Patterson. And I would just like to see a concrete, real plan as opposed to a generic laundry list approved that they could put anything they want there.
All right. Thank you, sir. Edward Carlton? Well, let's let the other folks speak, sir.
Bishop Edward Carlton, 46 East 15th Street, Everco 27105. I'm the vice president of the Northeast Western Neighborhood Association. Like Dan just said, I don't have any objection to that area being improved, renovated, or whatever. My problem was that I was notified that this planning rezoning hearing was coming up. Nobody in our neighborhood association knew about it. We had, we do have a city liaison officer whom we have asked repeatedly about, do you know what's going to happen with this property? And we were told nothing. As it is, I too am concerned because you've got a laundry list of things that can be put there, and there are some things that are not going to be to the advantage of our neighborhood. We have problems with tractor trailers. We having problems trying to get the city to repair our streets. Some homes have been damaged because of the tractor trailer, trapped it in that area because the houses are old, a lot of them got plastered walls and ceilings, and we've been dealing with that for a number of years now. And to see this here with this broad spectrum of uses, if they put someplace in there where we got more truck traffic, we've got kids that have to catch buses there. I've seen kids almost get run over by some of the traffic that goes up and down and in that area. And I'm really concerned, and I too would like to see a concrete what it actually is going to be, not this, well, we might put this here, we might put that there. Because once it's approved, then that whole laundry list can be in effect, and it's nothing that the community can do about it. And my main part was, we wasn't even informed. We found out from a business about the rezoning. In other words, it was a slap in the face for us to say that the neighborhood and the homeowners don't matter. And I took that personally. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
I, I understand what you and the, and the other person are, are saying in terms of, you know, wanting to know more about the plan. My understanding, and maybe staff can help me with this, is though that the, there's a fairly long laundry list right now that includes car repair and, and a variety of things that, that are already there, and if we, the, the kinds of things that Mr. Amir is, is requesting are actually more community-friendly, it seems, than some of the uses that are currently on, on that zoning. So, if we were to leave it alone, you've got a bunch of uses that you, you still don't know about, but if we add some of these and, and he has the willingness to do it, maybe, maybe you'll get some of these more community-friendly services there. I mean, what do you, what do you think about the services that he's adding to that?
But this is the point that we are trying to make.
Uh-huh.
We have, we have neighborhood association meetings where we invite people to come, A, if they are planning on doing something, we invite all of the merchants there, those from West Salem State that has facilities in that area and everything, and nobody had showed up or even mentioned anything about this rezoning or doing something with the property. If we were, had been able to sit down in our meeting and find out specifically what was going to happen or what they wanted to do, I don't even think we would have been here. But the fact that the matter is that the neighborhood association and the homeowners, we in completely in the dark. We don't really know what's going on with the property, other than it's going to be rezoned.
Yeah. Now, I, I personally went out there and saw the signage, so I guess you saw the zoning signs, but I also see a note in our notes that it did not indicate a neighborhood meeting had been held, and I guess I could ask that to Mr. Amir, why that didn't occur, or if it did occur.
We have, we have our meetings once a month.
No, I mean, he didn't ask for a meeting with the neighbors about this, which is what you're saying, right?
Because we have a city liaison, Christopher Mack, and we have been asking him, not just in December, but for months before then, I know at least what, eight months before then, about what, did he know anything about the area down around the old seven-up? I still talk seven-up when I was growing up, it's seven-up, but the Forsyth Field Home area and the buildings, of course, there's some more buildings down there that's about ready to fall down, and we've been asking about that. And we didn't get any answers. We didn't know about no hearings or anything till the sign goes up and somebody calls, say, hurry, they getting ready to have a rezoning here. And, and what it is, is we in the dark about what's going to happen with that property. You know? I mean, when, when I came in and looked at the list, when he gave me the book to read over, and I'm saying, okay, well, what is this, what is it going to be? Is it going to be all of this stuff that's listed here? I mean, you know, we don't know, and nobody has sat down, taken the time to try to explain this to those that are concerned about what's happening in the neighborhood.
Mr. Carlton, I have a question. When you say that no one let you know what was going on, were you saying that you didn't know the specifics, or you didn't even get a letter indicating that there was a request?
Did not get a letter or anything.
Well, let me, let me just point out, if you'll look at the zoning map there, the area that is hatched in and shaded green is within the 500-foot radius that is in the U D O as a requirement that we send out a letter. So, everyone within that green shaded area would have been sent a letter. I think the gentleman stated he was on 15th Street. 15th Street is, is outside, just outside of that. There's a little piece of the properties that are on the north side of E. 16th and east side of North Patterson that would have gotten a letter. And, but then also, that map shows where we posted signs. There's one right there on Patterson. I think you saw the picture when Gary was going over the picture showing the, the sign there. We had another sign on Chestnut and a directional sign on, at Glen, on Glen there, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I was just going to suggest if, perhaps we might continue this and allow them to have a meeting in the interim.
We might. Let's go ahead and finish the public hearing, if we may, and I've got another speaker signed up and see if anybody else got comments, and then we can, okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Is it Abdullah Salim? Is that correct?
I didn't come prepared to actually speak, but I am in support of this particular action because...
Excuse me, I, I do need you to get your address on the record.
My name is Amatullah Salim, and I live at 590 Mock Street, Winston-Salem, 27127. I am in, I'm concerned because this, it looks like a pattern that the, I'm also the chairman of the Happy Hill Neighborhood Association, and a similar activity is happening in our neighborhood with the Happy Hill Park Planning, Master Plan. The citizens there asked me about it, and I could not answer them because I had not received any information except a flyer that was left on a table, and I happened to pick it up. So, it seems that the citizens are not being notified in time, or they're not being properly informed of what you are getting ready to do in our communities, and this is unacceptable. That's why I'm here to support that, that particular region because in my district I'm having the same thing happen. Thank you.
Can you clarify, did you say you're supporting or you're opposing this request?
I am in support of the, of the, of the action of not actually informing the community organizations. The people who live in these communities are not being properly informed about what you are getting ready to do with our tax money. We need to know in more detail or in more time, or the, the people who live there are the ones who are going to either benefit or not benefit by what you're getting ready to do, and they need to know. They're not being informed properly. That's all I'm saying.
Does, does your neighborhood association have someone who follows the website to check on rezoning requests and that sort of thing?
Does my association? My association is in the process of forming because this is a new neighborhood in the Happy Hill Association, so we don't have that in place at the moment.
Okay. Well, and, and I encourage you to do that because we've encouraged neighborhoods doing that, and they have folks that monitor this and keep up with it and keep your association informed, so.
You probably have, but when you have these new neighborhoods, there's no one there to monitor anything. That's why we're starting a Happy Hill Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak on this particular case in opposition to it? If not, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Yeah, yeah, come on, come back, you will.
Hey, I did hear my friend here, we did have the plans. Welcome to see the plans in Mr. Dan's inspection. It's a convenience store, it's a offices, it's a community center, it's a garage, it's a warehouse. It's already approved. I get the number of the permits. You can get it and looking for the plan. So, we already know what we need to do in the place. This is because he say he lost, he needs some concrete to know. Again, the newspaper, Winston-Salem Journal, have this issue in December 14. Again, the newspaper, Winston Salem Journal, have this issue in December 14, in the first page, and the December 24 in the first page. That mean for the other guys say he never know about it. It's all over. I got four places in Patterson beside the place. I have a barber shop, a beauty salon, a beauty salon, convenience store. That's next door to that building in Patterson Avenue. And I don't see no activity there for the people, it's just, and the big sign zoning, last year, we have a big sign zoning. I get the letter, like everybody here, so the zoning people send the letter to everybody. So everybody need to be notified. So if somebody coming here say, I do not receiving it, I already receive it. That's the mail here. So everybody receiving it. So I don't see the, you know, is, I'm try do some for the community, like my friend here say, I already have my list. Only thing I'm at, the community center, because my family wanna give back to the community. That's a free money our, our heart. You know, God like people to build, not to store.
Mr. Amir, are you willing to attend the next neighborhood association meeting and, and have a interactive conversation?
He live in 15th Street, meaning he next door to my store, you know. I don't see no activity. We the one, me and my family since 1990.
That, that's not my question. Why are you willing to meet with them?
I don't have no problem, you know, I'm here.
So is that, so you're willing to meet?
We did a scholarship for the community.
Are you, are you willing to?
We give money to the community, we give everything to the community. Where is this guy? I'm not here to take, I'm here to give. I'm here to build, not to store.
Very good.
You know, so I don't, you know, I don't understanding, you know, somebody, when a people go and build a church, devil will try stop him. You know what I mean? You try build a church, that's what, that the children, we already make a letter for the city, my friend, to have all the children there, and no profit coming at the place is our heart. If somebody need, if you need the place, I already done, go it management. It's just some stay here, when we leave the earth, in God's sight, will we have some good? Like people give a ties, people do this. So everybody's dealing with God different ways. That's how we deal with God, because he's already blessed us. We do receive the letter, we have everything legally, we never see this guy, this is the first time I see this guy. I don't know.
All right, let, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Since you know exactly, you're saying what you're gonna do, could some of these uses you've requested then be taken out? Or is, do you not need?
This is, is in the past when we done the rezoning, we have to picking up too many item. But when we try to present the plans to the inspection, it, the inspection asking what use you get a have. So we already done the plan, and here the permit number is already issue the permits. It's done, we've been six months in it.
Let, let me add something to that. So when Mr. Amir went through the rezoning the first time, it got approved, and so he submitted his plans to inspections, like he said.
Yep.
And it showed the community center on there. So when our plans reviewers looked at that, he didn't have a use on there that fit community center. So we had to stop right there and say, hang on, we can't approve this part of the plan. You need to go back through rezoning to add a use that works for community center. And so that use is recreation services indoor. So when, when Paul and I sat down with him to, to go over this again, we said, hey, think about any other uses outside of recreation services indoor that you may need in the future. And that's why you see a few extra uses on there.
If he didn't have a community center, he wouldn't even be here.
Correct.
So are you saying that there are a number of uses that he doesn't need that are listed that we can get rid of, and that might alleviate the concerns?
Let's be clear, currently, to do his plans that he currently has in inspections, yes, there are uses he doesn't need. However, should those uses change in the future, he may need some of the additional uses on this list.
Keep in mind, your, your zoning runs with the land, and so he's not only thinking about now, but what's down the road, 10 years, 15 years?
Yeah, I guess what I'm... Negotiation was done in 14, in, in terms of uses. The use negotiation was done in 14, and only because he's added community center.
Right.
Is he?
Yes, sir.
Right. So we wanted to prevent him two years down the road from saying, oh, I need another use, I gotta go back through it again.
Yeah, and I think maybe to Mr. Brown's point earlier, I'm not sure that these additional uses, I mean, them are that objectionable, but maybe we need to ask Mr. Carlton or some way.
Yeah, I agree. Let's find out from them what uses are concerned.
Mr. Carlton? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, my question is...
I'll introduce myself. I'm Chenita Johnson, that's C-H-E-N-I-T-A Johnson, and my residence is 2411 North Patterson Avenue, and I'm the secretary for our neighborhood association.
Okay, thank you. My question, I guess, some of these additional uses that you would find objectionable, I'd just like to see what they are and see if Mr. Amir would be willing to strike one to him. I don't wanna, I, I understand what staff is doing, trying to help him, not only now, but in, in the future. But are there some uses that you find objectionable that they, he's requested?
Well, we want to understand exactly what those uses are for. Uh, I understand we're hearing it's for community, but the community hasn't heard from them. Now, I'm outside of that radius, so I did not receive a notice. Uh, the person who lived inside of that radius was the one that contacted me, and I contacted the president. Uh, but whatever happens on that piece of land is going to change that community, because I live three blocks up from it, although I'm just outside of that radius. So I'm concerned about that laundry list also, and would like to see something very concrete. If he's talking recreation center or community center, uh, what type? Uh, how, how are you gonna staff it? Those are things that we need to know. Uh, what type of traffic patterns is going to be caused if you have, you know, uh, that type of facility there? So those are things we need to look at, and we have a neighborhood association, as Reverend Carlton said, every month. We meet every month, winter, snow, doesn't matter. Uh, and we are gonna have our next meeting on the 25th of this month, and that's on the Monday. And we will be at Ambassador's Cathedral Church on Harriet Tubman Drive. We meet there, uh, we meet between that church and St. James. We have two active churches in our community. And it will be at 6:00 PM. So he is more than welcome to come. We have inquired and asked, as Reverend Carlton said, we ask our liaison. When we started hearing noises coming from the Seven, uh, the Seven Up building a couple of years ago, uh, we wanted to know what was going on in there, and we could never find out. So, uh, and we kept asking, you know, he's welcome to come, we need to find out what the businessmen are doing in our community. So we didn't know. And we would love to invite him to come to our meeting. We would love to speak with him. If he would not like to come to a full community meeting, our office will meet with him. So, because we're, we want our community to grow, and we're concerned about what comes in. And we have no problems with development, but we just need to be, uh, we need to have more input into what it is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Amir? You had your permit, right? You're working, you're working on the building now?
Not now. We supposed to be start Monday.
Okay.
And we do have the permits, it's issue, it's a fire permit, like we say early, the use for it, and we've been on the business for one year. And the reason I cannot get with you, because I running with the plan, city, back and forth, changing this, changing this, and I've been six months, have a hard time to hit the plan approved. So I really don't have, it's good to have a good people around me, let him take the place, which I've made, you know, I have to mention it to, I did, you know, Mr. Richard Bock from the city, he did asking me the same question, who's gonna manage the place? We have the lady, have a college and a master degree, I have her resume, and she's ready to management. What the community is for the children, it's not for anybody, it's only the children. We try giving them street, have something to do in the community. Now, you know...
Well, my question, I guess, you really start work in the building anyway.
Yes, my...
You've got other work to do, other than the community center.
Yes, yes, I do, I do.
Is a 30-day continuance going to, give you time to meet with them and come back here in 30 days, gonna be a problem?
That's, I don't have no problem, you know. I don't wanna say, because again, God like to build. I don't wanna say, thank you very much, I keep my money, walk away. Because I'm try give some, you know, why the people is not happy when you give some. I say it's nonprofit, I'm not put my hand in the children to take money. I got my own business, we got on our property. We just give some back to the community, what is the problem?
Okay. What we would like to suggest is that you meet with these folks, and us continue this for 30 days. You come back here next month, if there's some of, if there's some of those uses that you, you've asked for, that you've decided that maybe you don't need, we can remove them.
You know, like Mr. Adam say, down to the role, it's not too much to us, you know, like a barber shop and the beauty salon, you know, and the community center, it's not too much we ask. Maybe we rented the places, you know, maybe today the convenience store is not doing good, maybe we rented like a beauty salon. You know what I mean? Some income to keep and support the community center.
Now, we, we certainly understand needing a number of uses. We, we understand that, but in fairness to the neighbors, I'd like for you to meet with them, and we'd like to continue this 30 days. Is that sort of the board's desire?
Okay, with me, sir.
Okay. All right. He's fine with that. So would someone care to make that motion? Mr. Little made a motion to continue it, and Mr. Lamb seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. You need to name it. Mr. Little made the motion. Mr. Lamb seconded, okay. And we'll continue, and we'll see you next month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay. Moving on.
Yeah. Let me just make a footnote here. A number of the things that kinda got mentioned kinda had to do with detailed operational things, and that may be, uh, something that's relevant to the city financing piece, but it would not be relevant to the zoning. Just want to make that clear, so.
Okay.
And also, I appreciate staff trying to assist the petitioner in maximizing the use of the property. I do definitely appreciate that, so.
Well, again, again, he was a little frustrated that he had to come back through again when he realized that he didn't have that, so what we're trying to do is trying to avoid him getting in that trap again, and all that, so.
Okay. All right. Bylaws revision.
Okay. Did, you all got a copy of that in your packets there? And let me just remind everybody...
I need to pass out this email we got today.
Yes. Okay. And as Aaron is handing that out, let me just go back and explain why we're doing this. We, we came to you back, uh, last month, and as you recall, we had, uh, we've had one or two cases where, uh, people were thinking about, uh, continuing the case, but it was after that deadline, and so they put in their request to continue. They don't qualify for an automatic continuance, and then we get calls from neighbors who are asking us to tell them, is, they're gonna be hearing or not. And all we can say is that they have requested a continuance, uh, it is up to the planning board to decide. We have not, we don't recall in our memories a time where the planning board has denied the request for continuance, but theoretically, that's still possible, so we cannot guarantee them that it's going to be, that it's going to be continued. So that created some frustration in recent times with people not being able to be assured and feel like they needed to come down here anyway to the hearing to make sure it did, and, and all that. So that is why we brought this to you, and you agreed to have us kinda put, put this together. The way that we have, uh, written this is, uh, for a continuance, uh, what we said is that if you, we changed it from Monday to Tuesday. Uh, and the reason we did that is to, again, we're trying to avoid people feeling like they're in limbo. So if they can get it to us by Tuesday, then we can, uh, what we typically do with somebody asking a continuance is we ask them to get in touch with anybody who they've been talking with on the neighborhood side, to let them know it's been continued. And then, uh, I think what we, I, I don't know if we do that now, but we could do, put on our website that that has been requested for continuance. But, uh, we just thought it made sense to kind of extend that to Tuesday so that we could give residents some assurance that it was. Now, keep in mind, too, that the staff report comes out that previous Friday. Sometimes, well, petitioners are seeing that staff report for the first time, and so that may take them a few days to kinda decide, but either based on the staff report or their discussions with residents, that they wanna, they wanna continue. So they may not make that Monday deadline as it was in this, in this case. So that's why we extended it to Tuesday. Uh, we, uh, we also revised the, um, uh, withdrawal thing to extend that to Tuesday as well, so for the same reason. So that is what we've, have put together based on our discussion last month, and I just want to call your attention to an email we got, uh, today from Eric Bushnell, who said that he felt that this should be, that the deadline should be moved backwards, uh, to before the, uh, the formal agenda is printed, so that it could be stated in the agenda.
How far back we talking about?
Well, he's...
Agenda publication date, right? The Friday?
We would, yeah, in order to...
The Waker Moore.
So, well, that was the, that would be the previous week, and we try to wrap up the agenda by Friday morning, send it to the print shop, get it online on, on, on Friday afternoon. But just keep in mind, when you move it backwards, then you're lengthening that limbo time that if somebody doesn't get the automatic continuance, but they're gonna, you know, that, that puts us even more in the situation where we have people saying, well, can you guarantee me that it's gonna be with, uh, withdrawn or, or continued? And we can say, we say, no, we can't guarantee that. Keep in mind, that's both neighbors who ask and petitioners. It's not just the petitioners that we can't guarantee. It's anyone that calls. Yeah, that's what I mean, is, is citizens, neighbors, petitions, petitioners, all of them.
So we're saying the Tuesday of the week of the meeting?
Yes.
Just two days before the meeting?
Yes.
We get the request on Tuesday. Is that sufficient time for folks? I mean, what are we gonna do then? We gonna...
You're gonna have to notify them on the website or something? And then it's gonna have to be sort of like a, I think, it's not pending, that I think if the petitioners indicated they're gonna request a continuance, and you post the notice on the website, the same place where folks would come and look for an agenda, and then the petitioner changes his mind and draws this request for continuance, we understand that we're probably not gonna grant that.
Right.
You know, we're gonna continue it.
That hardly, that rarely happens, so I don't recall that.
They couldn't, w- w- once they have, once they've submitted and it's prior to that deadline, we, I mean, they could not rescind that continuance request.
Uh, I think my concern is, maybe I share with Mr. Bushnell, is here, do we have adequate notices? Two days enough time, or should, you know, what, what would be the problem with saying that a continuance request needs to be here by the previous Friday, or before the agenda is printed?
You just don't know that you got a denial.
Yeah, right. That's the issue is...
You don't know that the same day you're putting the agenda out? Is that what you're saying?
The applicant, we don't publish our staff reports to the public until that Friday around noonish, early afternoon, so if you're the petitioner, you...
Even after the agenda's been sent out, before you get the staff report, is what you're saying?
Typically, what happens is if we're gonna recommend denial, we call and let the petitioner know ahead of time, but they don't see the actual report until that Friday afternoon, so it gives you a tiny window to...
You need a little time to figure out if you want to continue this, right? Try work it out.
Yeah, my concern is that people who want to attend these meetings have got to do some advanced planning. I mean, they have to get off work, they have to arrange their lives so that they can do that. And if they don't find out until the Tuesday before the Thursday meeting, and, I don't know, will that be published on the website on Tuesday, or will it be published on Wednesday? I mean, that pushes it in my, I feel very uncomfortable with that. I just think that that's not giving people enough notice.
But it's better than the situation now where you can't tell them anything, knowing though when they get here, it's always, Paul said, we've never not continued one.
Just, just generate the staff report a week earlier.
Yeah, that's where I was going at.
That would be nice.
Well, we can, we can back up the application deadline a, a week earlier there.
Yeah, I, it, you know, I think the public does depend on, on the web more and more. There's still people that don't have access to it, but, um, if we, if we change this and we don't firm up some way of letting the public know, then we really haven't been responsive to the...
then we really haven't been responsive to the public that's trying to figure this out.
Well, we're letting-
Now, there are people could, can call in. There are people, but it is amazing, the number of people that don't know that they can call in and, and find that kinda stuff out.
What Aaron's saying, they call now and they tell them, well, we can't tell you for sure, but it's probably gonna be continued. Now you can tell them with all the assurance it's gonna be continued.
Yeah, right.
So this is an improvement.
Let me maybe add a little bit to this, so the continuance, the process we have now with the Monday deadline, it works pretty well.
Right.
So if we just left the continuance, and basically right now, it's only for your first continuance request. If you come in and ask for a second one, no matter when you submit it, you still have to come up here and have the board vote on it. So if we just left the continuance part at a Monday submittal deadline, but allowed the second continuance to be automatically granted, that would help out a lot. And for the withdrawal requests, if we kept that at Monday, but we still, you know, right now we have language that says only one automatic withdrawal request shall be granted for subject property within 12-month period, we're proposing to take that out again, so there was another one, if it was again, if it came in by that Monday deadline, it'd be automatically granted. Would the Monday deadline rather than the Tuesday work?
That keeps it like it is now, it just allows you to have the second one be an automatic one, too.
And that's an improvement over what we have.
The petitioner, one business day to think about what he's gonna do from the time that he gets informed, and that gives the neighborhood, or not necessarily the neighborhood, but the contestant, two business days.
And the other thing that we do that on, if it was stated, I didn't hear it, is that if we have contact information for opposition, folks that have made their opposition known to us, we do contact them, but we also ask that developer to contact anyone that they may have had contact with, whether it be the neighborhood association, whether it be a list of folks that they had a neighborhood meeting with, that they let those folks know as well, but again-
You can't rely on that.
Well, and also, we don't have any other way of getting, broadcasting the word except for the website, besides the folks that we do know that we have contact information for.
I don't see any negative unintended consequences with making the changes the way you proposed. I see this as an improvement over our current situation myself.
So you wanna make the change to Monday, and then leave it, leave the rest of it like it is? Like, like we're proposing it?
Well, your Tuesday is okay with me, I mean, if that's what you think, I mean.
We just, the only reason we went from Monday to Tuesday is try to reduce that window of uncertainty that we can't guarantee someone that it's been automatically continued.
Yeah, I definitely would prefer Monday to Tuesday, but I also would like some assurance that if there is a continuance, that it would definitely be listed on the website, because I don't know if that's consistently done. And then also that there was some kind of notice on the website telling people to check and see, so that they would know to do that.
Yeah, we can arrange to do that. Now, the deadline is 5 o'clock Monday, it might take us till Tuesday morning to get it on there, but, and then we also, I believe, can inform City Link, because they're the ones that are the intake for phone calls. Sometimes people call them even after hours to ask about a zoning case, and we can get that information to them so that they can, they can let people know.
I'm fine with moving it to Monday, and then the petitioner can't make his mind up, he can always come and request his continuance here.
But leaving, well.
So, we need action on this, and we need-
The planning board would have to approve a change in the bylaws.
As submitted with the change of going back to 5:00 PM on Monday for the continuance request instead of Tuesday, as it's-
So moved.
That's motion, Mr. Lamb seconded, Mr. Mulican, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, okay, thank you. Staff report.
Okay, first thing is, Aaron, you wanna get that signed? We, we decided that it might be a little less confusing to citizens when we're dealing with special use permits that go to the elected body, that we don't put a Z sign that implies it's a rezoning, but special use permit. So, we designed and worked with transportation on a new design for that, it's shaded purple.
East Carolina purple.
Yes, in honor of that, Gary's put on a perfectly colored too.
Well, we actually talked about the letters in gold, but Aaron thought people might think that was a bit of nepotism on his part since he's an East Carolinian guy.
Yeah, so, now, realizing that any special use permits come to the elected body are only coming to you as a planning board to review the site plan, but, but still, if they call in there, we can give them the information about when it would be scheduled for the city council for them to be able to come, or, and if they wanna know more about the site plan, how to get in touch with the staff and all that. So, just wanted to let you know about that, that we're gonna try to hopefully head off any confusion about special use permits.
Will they always be that big?
But, that's how big all those signs are currently, it's just they don't look that big. They just don't look that big whenever they're posted, look at them from the street, but they're all that size. That's a size, I'm sorry, that's the size of like a speed limit sign.
The next thing I wanted to let you know is our caseload for February, looks like we'll have four new cases coming to you, and perhaps up to three text amendments. So we'll talk about those in a work session coming up, the text amendments. Area plan update, the Southeast Suburban Plan, we'll be bringing that to you to brief you all at the work session leading up to a public hearing on February 11th. The Southwest Area Plan, that's the Greater Ardmore area. Meeting number three is coming up on the 21st at 6 o'clock. And then we'll be kicking off the Rural Hall Area Plan, that's Rural Hall and surrounding area around, around Rural Hall. The first meeting will be on the 26th, and in meeting with the town manager in Rural Hall, he suggested that we start all those meetings in Rural Hall at 5:30. He thought, given the demographics of the area, people would appreciate a little earlier start time for that. So those meetings, as opposed to all our others, would start at 5:30. So, that's update on area plan. Let's see, Farmland Preservation Plan, I think Paul was at the kickoff meeting to that. I think they'll be having a second meeting in maybe March, February, or whatever. Glenn Simmons, actually, retired Glenn Simmons, consultant Glenn Simmons is writing that, writing that plan, and I think when he gets something together for people to review, they'll be getting together again.
Yeah, I just might make a comment about that, Paul, it was really a good meeting, I really enjoyed it. It is on the farmland, and there was a lot of good brainstorming, and we broke out in groups, and everybody made notes, and Glenn took all that and is gonna put it all together for us. And yeah, he said we'd meet sometime in, you know, March, or in that area, April, or whatever. A great meeting.
Yeah. And, next thing is, one of the items that you agreed to in your, we had an extended discussion at your November meeting about accessory dwellings, and we got a new batch of questions from you all. And I'm glad to report we have answers to those questions, but I wanted to hand out this, not to discuss today, but for you all to get an advance look at it a couple of weeks, and we'll have that on our agenda for the work session. So, hopefully that'll be helpful to you as you, as you get ready for that discussion. And again, we're, we're hoping to get to the point with you that you at least have a, the substance of the text amendment that you would agree to go ahead and have a public hearing on. You may not necessarily be ready to recommend it, but at least something to, to have a public hearing on. The, so the work session, it looks like we'll, we'll have the accessory dwelling item, we'll have the Southeast Suburban briefing, and then we'll have the three text amendments that we'll be giving you, or the other two text amendments, one would be the accessory dwelling, but the other two text amendments that we'd be giving you a briefing on. And I believe that would be it for the staff report.
I think we need to apply for some hazardous duty patient. Mr. Hicks is not here, he had back problems today, and he's a doctor, he sent me the message. That's the reason he's not here, and I had my lawyer issues this weekend. I thank you for the card and well wishes and all that, so, anyway. Anybody, for the good of the order here, anyone else?
One quick question. I know that the neighborhood associations have representatives that sign up to get something from us. When do they, when is that? It's not every rezoning case, we don't send out a notice.
No, what I've done on a couple of occasions is I have sent letters out to the, and I'm gonna emphasize this, to the known neighborhood association presidents that are on the list that, that Community and Business Development keeps, urging them to have what I would call a zoning watch person, kinda like a neighborhood watch person, but in this case, a zoning watch person with directions on how to just take two minutes a month to look at the website, to see what zoning cases are coming up, and see if there's anything that's, that's coming up to them. So, we've encouraged people to do that, I don't know that people consistently do that. I'm, I'm hoping that through the Neighborhood Alliance and Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, they can continue to encourage their member organizations to, to do that, because I think that's a very helpful resource. Then, of course, we have the letter notification, the signs, and all that, so.
Right, let me make a suggestion. Why don't we ask these neighborhood associations to give us that contact person? And why don't we create a group email here, and we proactively send an email, a blanket email with the agenda attached to it, and just, they can't say they didn't. And then, it'd be on them to keep us informed if they change their secretary or president or whomever.
Changes to them getting informed would be a lot higher.
Yeah, yeah, instead of saying, you know, we encourage you to come to us, I mean, how much trouble would that be for us?
I think what we would need to do is ask the community assistance liaisons, I believe there are, I think about five of them?
Six.
Six, and they're assigned to different wards, and they, it's their jobs to know what's going on in those neighborhoods and to have key contacts. And I think maybe what we need to do is ask them for their help in identifying the key leaders in those areas. That might be the best way to do that, but again, I would, I would hope we could get some help from the Neighborhood Alliance to get us contact.
Well, I think it used to be the case, I don't know if it's still the case, that with the website, you can register to be notified when different things happen or change.
Yes.
And so maybe it can be the case that people can register
Right.
to receive that notification, rather than us having to create a separate email group.
But, but that's what I've tried to do before, is send out letters to everyone who we knew about, who was, and ask them to appoint someone to, to do that, so.
Richie Brooks, though, does maintain a list of neighborhoods and some HOAs.
Very good.
And if, if that department could work with planning department to prepare the email addresses, all, all planning is doing is just hitting that group, I would assume that that would be what Mr. King was suggesting, and, and that could go out, and, you know, because there has been a great deal of encouragement for that department to keep up with the most recent information about neighborhoods. And I think at least two of these neighborhoods would have easily been hit had that happened.
Anything else here for the board members?
Yeah, I'd like to share something. Among the most prestigious awards conferred by the governor of North Carolina is the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. It is awarded to persons for exemplary service to the state of North Carolina and their communities. That is above and beyond the call of duty, and which has made a significant impact in Strathland, North Carolina. So, I'm pleased that on Friday, December 11th, I was in Kernersville at the annual meeting, I think, of the Kernersville Foundation, or maybe it was a special meeting of the Kernersville Foundation. Either way, our very own Arnold King was the recipient of the Order of the Long Leaf Pine.
Yay!
Quite an honor.
He was itchless then as well.
I just got some good friends and lobbied hard somehow, told a bunch of lies or something.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Anything else, does it go to order your day? Mr. Mulican, it's your turn.
I'm falling off, but I'm just gonna make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay.